Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's Stratford City Council meeting. As I call the meeting to order, we'll begin with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Joining me in the council chamber is our Chief Administrative Officer Joan Thompson, our Director of Finance Carmen Kruger, our City Clerk Tachana Defoe, and our Deputy Clerk Chris Bantock. Mr. Bantock will actually be running this evening's meeting. So I'll turn it over to him now with the first item.
Through your worship, item number two is declarations of community interests. And if there are any, please state the general nature thereof.
Counselor Vazalacos and Counselor Burbak.
Yes, in Finance and Labor Relations Committee tonight, item 4.1, which is the optimism please request. I am a member of their capital campaign committee, so I'll declare an interest.
Thank you, Counselor Burbak.
Thank you, item 9.2.1 in the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee for the proposed exemption from signed by law 159, 2004 for 35 Waterloo Street North. I'm on a board and that organization is a tenant at that building. So I will not be participating.
And I would take it you won't participate in any questions of the delegation under 6.1 either. Thank you.
Yeah, 6.1 as well.
Thank you, just the clerk notes that, Mr. Band talk back to you.
Item number three is adoption of the minutes. And there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the Corporation of the City of Stratford dated July 11, 2022 be adopted as printed.
Moved by Counselor Vazalacos and seconded by Counselor Beatty. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried.
Item number four is adoption of the addendum. And there is an addendum to be adopted. The motion be that the addendum to the regular agenda of council and stand committees dated August 8, 2022 to add receipt of a delegation request and information report from Destination Stratford be added to the agenda as printed.
Counselor Clifford moving, Counselor Bunting seconding. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, it's carried.
Item five is report of the committee of the whole in camera session. And item 5.1 at the August 8, 2022 session held prior to this meeting under the Municipal 2001 as amended, matters concerning the following items were considered. 4.1 Arbitration Update with the Stratford Professional Firefighters Association. And that was considered under Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations, Section 239 2D Advice That Is Subject to Solicitor Client Privilege, Including Communications Necessary for That Purpose and Litigation or Potential Litigation, Including Matters Before Administrative Tribunals Affecting the Municipality or Local Board. Item 4.2 Draft Accommodation Licensing Bylaw and that's considered under advice that is subject to Solicitor Client Privilege, Including Communications Necessary for That Purpose. And item 4.3 being the Draft Site Alteration Bylaw, that's considered under advice that is subject to Solicitor Client Privilege, Including Communications Necessary for That Purpose. And at the in camera session, direction is given on all items.
All right, thank you.
Item six is hearings of deputations and presentations. And item 6.1 is a delegation request from Lauren McKennitt. And there is a motion that delegation of Lauren McKennitt with respect to a proposed exemption from signed by law 159-2004 35 Waterloo Street North be heard.
Mover, Counselor Ingram, seconded, Counselor Ritzma. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. We'll welcome Ms. McKennitt to the meeting. I'll give it to the clerk to allow her into the room.
Hi, Lauren, can you hear us? You can, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, your worship, and good evening, counselors. The clerk reached out to me that I would have another opportunity to appear before you to offer new information or clarifications concerning the Falstaff Family Center's application for sign variance. Since then, I've tried to reach out to each of you to address any concerns you may have, hoping to make this subject in your agenda tonight perhaps a bit quicker. My thanks to those who were able to either speak with me, email, or acknowledge my correspondence. I realize you all have a great deal of workload on your hands. Knowing that there are some counselors with whom I was not able to connect, I will review the essence of my communication to them now. Since purchasing the Falstaff School in 2000 and initiating its heritage designation, I've put it back into service to the community. Given that it has never made a profit, but rather has required underwriting by myself for more than 20 years, the majority of what we do there, including supporting the Legion in mounting the annual Remembrance Day service, is an act of public service. The Falstaff Family Center supports many groups, which include children and families, indigenous, multicultural, civic and climate emergency themes, themes which are short in terms of public awareness and are at the forefront of some of our most serious contemporary challenges. These groups are often looking to mount temporary signage for their various events and initiatives, some of which come and go in the calendar year, such as Truth and Reconciliation Day and Earth Day, and hence our application for change copy signs. Given that we do not foresee any of these being permanently fixed signs for long durations, it is our view that these themes and the accompanying change copy signage for civic minded efforts might not be considered in the same category as commercial enterprises with permanent signs. In the last council meeting, Counselor Henderson expressed concerns about small white and blue signs, which were put on the fence in 2020 at the onset of the pandemic as a gesture of goodwill and which set out the guidelines by which citizens were to follow should they wish to come onto the property. Given that they are no longer required from a COVID standpoint, they have been removed. The fish art, which was installed this year by the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority as part of their Children's May Water Festival, was also raised in the last council meeting. And Chief Building Official, Mr. DeWier, confirmed that this was deemed as art and not signage. In terms of the process undertaken at this end, including the financial and time commitments my colleagues and I have invested, we worked closely with city staff and made adjustments to ensure all their concerns and recommendations were taken into account. We issued more than 80 invitations for the neighborhood to give us their feedback, of which a handful attended, offered their thoughts, and were taken into our account in our application. The presentation to the Planning and Heritage Subcommittee was productive insofar as questions were asked and answered, including our agreement to enter into an encroachment agreement, given that part of the fence is on city property. The Subcommittee voted in support of five change copy signs. And finally, the Heritage Advisory Committee was able to offer their recommendation for three change copy signs, which we would find an acceptable compromise. If however, for any reason, council is not able to support this application this evening, I would ask that this matter be deferred so that perhaps another formula of approaching this could be found to work better for everyone. I'm available for questions and I'd also like to thank you once again for allowing me to appear for before you this evening and for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. McKennitt. Is there any questions that anyone has for Ms. McKennitt at this time? And if not, it'll be dealt with on the agenda at item 921. All right, we'll, we'll deal with it then. Thank you very again, Ms. McKennitt, and we'll go to the next delegation.
Turning to your addendum, item 6.2 is a request for delegation by Destination Stratford. And there is a motion that the Destination Stratford Report, titled 2022 Stratford Boathouse Public Washroom Project Report, dated July 4, 2022, be received. And that the delegation by Zach Gribble, Executive Director of Destination Stratford, regarding item 7.8 Boathouse Washroom Project Financing Alternatives be heard.
All right, moved by Counselor Burbak and seconded by Counselor Bunting. All those in favor? And that is carried. Good evening, Mr. Gribble.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on the Boathouse Public Washroom Expansion Project. As I've already presented to council previously about this project and given that the Destination Stratford Report was included as an addendum to this meeting's agenda, I'll try to keep this update very brief. So it was well over a year ago when this idea first started. In place of a secondary tourism kiosk at the boathouse, let's instead expand that space from an outdated, undersized and seasonal facility into a modernized, fully accessible and year round space with double the number of stalls. At that point, no one, including city staff that we worked closely with, anticipated the substantial cost increases for infrastructure projects due to supply chain issues, staffing shortages, and rampant inflation. It also became clear that we'd have to make several upgrades to protect the long term investment and community impact of the project. Just one example being upgrading the toilets from ceramic to stainless steel. So they are less likely to be damaged or vandalized, as has been the case with some other public washroom facilities. In an attempt to cover these cost increases, Destination Stratford has spent considerable effort over the last few months seeking additional federal and provincial grant funding above and beyond the 293,500 we originally secured. But unfortunately, this has proven to be impossible, mostly due to the inability to stack government grants with the particular grant that we received. The net result is a budget gap for the Boathouse Public Washroom Expansion Project that will require the city to invest additional funds if we want to see this done. The report contained in the addendum showcases the value of this project, both from a tourism and a civic infrastructure perspective. I'll also mention that a lot of in kind work has gone into this project, from securing the federal funding to the design and engineering process, to approval from the Accessibility Advisory Committee to obtaining a building permit and preparing all the documentation for the RFP process. The 293,000 in federal funding requires that the project be completed by the end of December. And if council supports this project by approving the requested gap funding, I'm confident that we can complete the renovation and launch the facility this winter. So although this project will cost more than we originally anticipated, it still represents excellent value for the city. And it's a perfect example of a Destination Development, Development Project that improves the quality of life for residents as well as support economic recovery and growth opportunities for our local tourism sector. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have about the project.
All right, any questions for members of council at this time? Counselor seven.
Thank you, I did have a question. Particularly, I'm just looking at option two that's on the agenda for this item to involve the city staff and in the RFP project. And have you had a chance to look at that, Zach?
Yes, so we've talked closely with the city about the various options. Obviously, our preferences for option one. And the main consideration there is timing. So we've got a small window in order to meet the funding requirements of just under 300,000 or the majority of the funding for this project. And that needs to be completed by December, which is very tight. We also have the tenant who runs the boat rental and boathouse restaurant. So we have to work around their schedule. So we can't actually start until near the beginning and or middle of October. And if the RFP tendering process would go through the traditional city, it's not clear to me that we could fulfill our timeline obligation and get this project done in time for meeting the grant requirement.
Okay, thank you. And just as a follow up, I'm just wondering, has there been dialogue with, I guess, the contractors about supply the quotes or exploration at all on to how to bring the costs down? I mean, you mentioned this change from ceramic to stainless steel toilets and sort of wondering if there's been sort of a thorough look through at all the items to maybe bring the cost down to sort of a more manageable to bring it more in line with the grant funding that's been approved or?
Yes, we have explored that. And the numbers that I'm bringing you are us after sharpening our pencils and making sure that we're meeting the minimum requirements that the grant requires us to do in terms of winterizing and expanding the number of stalls, et cetera, in terms of the Accessibility Advisory Committee's requirements with a universal washroom. That was very important. So given all of those parameters that we had to do, there really isn't additional cost savings. We do however, and I talked with the architect earlier today, we do feel that we will get more bids with this RFP. And we are spreading the, the net further should council approve option one. So we can get as competitive as bid as possible. If we can meet the requirements at a lower cost, then any additional funds would flow back to the city.
Great, thanks, someone. Counselor Gaffey.
Thank you, your worship, through you, Zach. In looking at the drawing, and I have to say, I think there's, there's real value in this project. I think there's, it's certainly an added value to the community. And I think there are needs for this type of development in the park. But my question is, look at, and I gained knowledge from another report that this operation is going to be stopped in some way or form. But I look at the drawings and I don't see any staff space. I don't know if that's needed on this. But normally, when you have staff, you have a staff room or a work room or something like that.
Thank you for the question. We do have a, a small supply room, which we worked closely with the architect to make sure that that would fulfill community services needs for servicing that. So obviously, and the city staff report goes into more detail in terms of projected costs with moving from a smaller seasonal washroom to a double the size year round washroom. Obviously, there will be more maintenance involved from a staffing perspective. But we absolutely have accommodated for supplies in order to support that maintenance.
Good, thanks, Zach.
Anything further? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gribble. I'll just ask the CIO if there's anything that the staff would like from us right now with regard to this item, or is it, does the clerk have it later in the agenda?
Through your worship, the report from staff is, as you noted, later on in the agenda. And we can answer any questions there, once you've heard the presentation from the staff report.
Thanks, Ms. Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Gribble. I appreciate the background. Give it back to Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, turning back to your agenda, item number seven is Orders of the Day. And item 7.1 is Correspondence Regarding the 25th Dragon Boat Festival. And there is a motion that city council hereby designates the 25th Dragon Boat Festival to be held September 17, 2022 in Lower Queens Park and on Tom Patterson Island as having municipal significance for the purpose of obtaining liquor licenses from the AGCO, subject to the necessary permits being obtained, compliance with the city's municipal alcohol risk policy and the required certificates of insurance being provided.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Gaffey, seconded by Counselor Ingram. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, it's carried.
Item 7.2 is a resolution regarding second extension of agreement for Integrity Commissioner Services. And there is a motion that the agreement dated December 18, 2018, between Robert J. Swayze and the Corporation of the City of Stratford for provision of Integrity Commissioner Services, be extended for a further two year term to December 9, 2024.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to move that item? Counselor Clifford, seconder? Counselor Beatty, discussion? Counselor seven? See the other thing?
Thank you, I just wanted to speak against the motion on the floor. I, I think from feedback from members of the public and, and other, other things, I think we should, you know, this is the first integrity commissioner that we've had. And I think it would be, serve us well to have a proposal for, for somebody else to fill that position, I think would be the best moving forward. So I, I would have to look for direction from staff. But I, for now, I'll speak against the motion and that's it for now. Thank you.
Counselor Ingram, Counselor Vazalacos, then Counselor Burbak.
Thank you, I would also speak against the motion. It's my understanding in speaking with our city clerk that when we went out with the original RFP, there were three proposals submitted in response to that RFP. And I do think that after our first two years, having had a good look at what the Integrity Commissioner role provides and the services that they can provide, I think it would be time for us to go out and do a full RFP for new services.
Counselor Vazalacos.
I was going to echo both of the previous comments.
Counselor Burbak.
Yeah, I would, I was going to say the same thing, but I also would point out, I think it would be a better idea for the new council to have a look at it and to, to take a look. There's a lot of actually media coverage about our current integrity commissioner that some counselors may want to take a look at before we make a decision like this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing other hands, it's been moved and seconded that the agreement dated December 18, 2018, be extended for a further two year term to December 9, 2024. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion is defeated. Counselor seven.
Thank you. Could I just ask staff, I don't know if it would be Ms. Kruger or, or Ms. Thompson, but what would be the most appropriate at this point? Would it be to put on RFP? Like, at what point would be, would make the most sense? I'm just looking for some direction would be appreciated.
I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Just wondering if we could get clarification from Counselor Seven as to what it is that he's looking to achieve here? And then I can respond better.
Sorry, yeah, so I guess to solicit for a different integrity. I don't know if Counselor Ingram or one of the other councils would like to speak to that a little more.
If, if I could take a stab at it, I think what you're asking is that we look at a full RFP process. It's probably within our best interest to do two things. Ask if we could get to an extension, probably up to six months from Mr. Swayze. And then to go forward with an RFP process that would come back to the new council early in the new year.
Yes, that's very good, thank you.
And the Counselor Vazalacos, I saw your hand.
I was just kind of pointed, I, I like the idea of like a short extension. Just, I, I think we have an opportunity here if we're going to go out to RFP, we take a look at the role of the Integrity Commissioner, look at the services that can be provided. Look at some of the challenges that Integrity Commissioners have had or challenges that councils have had with Integrity Commissioners in the province over the last couple of years since they started having them. And then even sort of reviewing our proceed, our, our code of conduct to make sure that we capture some of those newer issues that have come up. And so I can understand that that would be a process that, I mean, we're in the middle. You know, staff, the clerks certainly are very busy. But I do like the, the mayor's suggestion of a, a short extension and then allow us to have a closer look at what we may want to actually put into that RFP.
Okay, thank you. Counselor seven, you wanting to make a motion then?
Yeah, yes, please. I mean, essentially what you said, Mayor Matheson would be, and then adding on what Counselor Vazalacos.
So would it, if I could try to paraphrase for everybody and then you can jump in and say that I've kind of nailed it, is that we'd like to offer up to a six month extension to the existing contract to look at an RFP and to bring back any concerns to subcommittee to discuss the structure of the RFP, the role and responsibilities, and any changes that are required to the council code of conduct or other governing legislation or bylaws that we have.
That's perfect, thanks so much.
From your lips to my ears. Counselor Burbak, you'll second that? Ms. Thompson, have I got this right or is any concern from staff?
Thank you, your worship. No, I believe it is captured there. I will say though, that I am a little concerned with, with the workload here with respect to that we're in the midst of a municipal campaign and then there will be the orientation. So a little concerned about the six month extension, if that will be long enough. But we can make best efforts to try to achieve that. Get the report back to subcommittee before the RFP is, is issued.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. And, and I, I was going to ask staff that, given where we are in terms of municipal election campaign and recognizing that the new council may want to have some impact, input into the Integrity Commissioner. I'm wondering if even just going out for an RFP for a two year contract might give staff that little bit of breathing room as well as the new council enough time to get their feet wet, get familiar with the council process and the role of the, the Integrity Commissioner. And then we can kind of make a, a four year RFP decision after that or integrity position after that. But I'm just kind of wondering, you know, maybe it, it might be in our best interest to go out with the RFP now to assist with staff, give them some breathing space and then allow the new council to get their feet wet as well.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? The only concern I would say is that the items raised by Counselor Vazalacos with regard to looking at the experiences and being able to take that into consideration would not be able to be achieved if we went out right away. All right, does anybody have, Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if staff have, has a concern with like, like as far as the timing, could it be like advisable to have like, like an eight month instead of a six month because of like, of all, of all the time constraints? Would it be helpful to have eight months instead? And I'll ask that of staff.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, through you, your worship, in response to Counselor Clifford. I believe eight months would be, would be better and would, would allow us to do a fulsome review and schedule this before subcommittee, allow subcommittee to have a, a good discussion on what it is that they're seeking in the RFP before it's finalized and issued.
Right. Counselor seven.
I would, I would amend to eight months if that's more suitable for staff. I don't have an issue with that.
If I could, could we, could we give staff guidance of up to 12 months or something, knowing that six was our preference and, and let them try to settle it out? So that if Mr. Swayze has some time constraints on his side, where he says he won't stay for a full year, he'll stay, that we have something worked out?
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable with that, for sure.
The seconder be okay with that, Counselor Burbak? Yep, thank you. Anything further? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried, thank you.
Through your worship, item 7.3 is a proclamation regarding Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaims November 2022 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Stratford to recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening.
All right, mover for that, Counselor Vazalacos and Counselor Bunting. Discussion. Not all in favor? Opposed, if any, it's carried.
Item 7.4 is a resolution regarding proposed amendments to the Code of Conduct for Members of Council, Local Boards and Committees by law 133, 2018. And there is a motion that the Code of Conduct for Members of Council, Local Boards and Committees by law 133, 2018 be amended as noted on your agenda.
All right, Counselor Vazalacos and Counselor Ritzma moving and seconding. Discussion, Counselor Ingram.
Thank you, I had asked the clerk and our CIO earlier today to possibly look into some further amendments to the Code of Conduct. And I just wondered how far you got with that and if you want me to leave that with you.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes, thank you, through you, your worship, to Counselor Ingram. If you could leave that with us, whenever we're speaking about freedom of speech in the charter, it does take a very fulsome review of that. So we will get back to you as, as soon as we're able. But we do request that we give, be given about a couple of weeks to deal with that.
Thank you.
Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was going to ask if holidays could be added? Because if you have a holiday and there is a, a training, if you planned a holiday and there was a training that came up that you've already pre-planned the holiday, if it could be added into the briefment and sickness.
All right, okay, discussion on that? Anybody wish to make that an amendment? Counselor seven, I see your hand.
Oh, sure, I, I will, if, if Counselor Clifford is moving that on, second amendment. Sure, I just had a comment afterward as well.
Anything on the amendment to add in previously scheduled vacations? Counselor Burbak?
Thank you, I'm just not sure if it's Thank you. I'm just not sure if it's necessary because we'll be providing recordings so that that person could. Always watch recordings. And if they knew that the training was coming up, then they would book their vacations. I don't know. I just thought that the way it was worded. That might already be covered, but perhaps not.
In the absence of clarity, the fact that it doesn't say travel, it just says illness or bereavement, we could add, we could add travel into that as well, just so it's clear. And that's what councillor seven, you're willing to move as an amendment and seconded by councillor. Anything further on the amendment? Right, all those in favor of the amendment? Opposed if any, that's carried. Is there anything on the original motion that we would like to discuss? Councillor seven.
Thank you. I did have a question. Let me see here. Item D, that's in the second part for section forty seven. I was just wondering, it seems. I was just wondering, I guess, how does this compare to the way things are now? And it just seems. It feels to me like a deterrent for somebody to file a complaint and the process is already sort of. Complex for the average person who's just looking to file a complaint. So I just wondered if. We could speak to that or how this came about with a little more clarity around that.
Mr. Pho.
Through your worship, it is very similar to the information currently being requested. In speaking with our current integrity commissioner, we sought their review of the code of conduct to see if there are any further amendments that should be made. This was one that was an administrative one, just to clean up what was actually required and the best process for submitting complaints directly to the integrity commissioner. Currently complaints are required to be submitted to the clerk on a form that we have developed. Or via email due to COVID nineteen and then we submit that form to the integrity commissioner for review. But again, the information requested is basically the information the integrity commissioner requires in order to review the complaint. And determine whether to commence an investigation or to dismiss it.
Okay, thank you. And then a follow up for, for this as well. How common, do we know how common? Mandatory training in our, and things are for municipal councils as far as other municipalities go?
Through your worship, we did look at a few municipal code of conducts. From my understanding. Some municipalities have it included in speaking with the integrity commissioner. He did note that it can be included. And with including it in the code of conduct, it just means that if a member chooses to not attend, there could be penalties imposed by the integrity commissioner. And this again, just a way to ensure that members of council are intending the. City of Stratford paid orientation and training sessions, but unfortunately I don't have, I haven't surveyed all four hundred and forty three municipalities to know how common it is. My apologies for that.
Sure, no, and I didn't, I didn't expect, but thank you for that.
Councillor Clifford.
I was just gonna ask out of curiosity, what kind of penalties, if, if, if a councillor. The councillor decides hot to attend and take part, what, what is the penalties? What would happen if they don't? That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Pho.
So through your worship, it's my understanding the integrity commissioner could impose a monetary penalty. The penalties to be imposed would be at their discretion. And that's why we have built in. The development of recordings because we do understand that there will be situations that arise which may prevent a member from attending that may be unexpected. So we're hoping that the majority of time members will be attending or there is another avenue, but we want to ensure that we're including it in the code. So that if there is an issue, it can be reviewed by the integrity commissioner.
All right, I, I just want to circle back to the, to the wording that we just amended, but I'm just wondering if we. Should it be worded so that it's either attended or. Required to complete a form declaring that they read the materials or watch the session? I'm just wondering because there, there will be all kinds of, like there could be parental leave or, or any number of. You know. Reasonable reasons for not being able to attend. So I'm just wondering. If we should make the language not as specific or, or how it would work exactly if, if something else came up and then. The alternative, like could the alternative still be acceptable if another reason came up?
Mr. Pho.
So through your worship, so the intent was to make it restrictive so that there is an incentive for members of council to attend these sessions. With the understanding that sickness or bereavement likely wouldn't be known in advance. We can certainly add in additional language at councils, a direction, but I would caution making it too broad, otherwise it's not really. Helpful to then add it into the code if members of council can simply just not attend and watch the recording, which wasn't the intent of the inclusion. With respect to a parental leave, do you mean just like general childcare or taking a leave of. Absence from council because there is a separate process. So again, this wouldn't apply to members of council who have either taken a leave of absence. Or a parental leave in accordance with city policies.
Yeah, yeah, it was just an example of like a formal parental leave. I guess, I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just. Yeah, I guess I just don't, I don't know what the difference is, I guess, as far as attending it. When it's live versus sort of signing off on the training because I know a lot of. Like workplace trainings, like WMS and everything, they're, they're online and you do, you do get a certificate, you sign off and you send it in. So I'm just wondering, is the incentive to have the material completed and, and taken in by. By members of council or because I know, you know, lots of people coming on or people running or people on council now have. You know, a lot of other things going on. So I'm just wondering if the intent is to have. Councillors, you know, digest the information and sign up that they, they're responsible for, for knowing it. Then I'm just wondering if we could have it. That it's mandatory to attend or complete, I guess, would be rather than having, but I'll just let other people talk, so.
Councillor Vazalakos, councillor Ritma, councillor Ingram.
So, um, certainly in workplaces, there is a lot of mandatory training and sometimes when it's, it does require it to be in person. I could understand something that is highly technical or something where you have material that's actually been produced specifically for online training. And WMS training, for example, or iota training, they're really great modules, things like that. Part of the issue that I would have with council. Council training, some of it does require nuance, it requires discussion, it requires questions and answers. I don't know that you could get the depth of training that is required for some of the things that we. Take on and some of the, certainly some of the legislation that we're required to understand. I don't know that. Just asking someone, did you click through and read the material is going to suffice in that case. So I would not be in favor of an either or. I think there would have to be sort of very defined circumstances where you would miss training.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ritma.
Yes, and to pick up on, on councillor Vazalakos' statement, I, I agree a hundred percent that active participation. Certainly rounds out the training. You know, that interactive piece has lots of value for council. As, as a new council forms, as they debate, it's not just taking in. The information, but it's debating, it's, it's, it's challenging one, one another and, and learning from one another. So I think there's lots of value in, in ensuring that it's in person where, where possible. And certainly there are always extenuating circum- circumstances, but that interaction I think is vital for sure. So thank you.
Councillor Ingram.
Thank you. And I'm in full agreement with councillor Vazalakos and councillor Ritma. I think. Being together in person, attending the training all together as a group is, is vitally important so that everyone is hearing the same conversations. You're all hearing the same information, you're all actively participating and. It, it's, it acts as a form of team building as well. And you have to sort of, when you get into the council position, when you're newly elected. You have to look at it as a new job, a new position. And anytime you have a new job or a new position, you're required to complete training. It, it's just the way it, it happens. So. I'm, I'm in full agreement with making it mandatory and making it in person where possible.
Okay, councillor Clifford.
Yeah, I was going to also bring up if your employment, like I, I, I can get evenings off, but if you're, if you're working. At a job where you had to work at night. So I, I think that's the other thing would have to take in consideration if your employment. Or if you worked out of town and got home late, for instance, I think we have to take that in, into, I don't know, we have to put it in, but I also. It's, it, it can happen if you, if your job calls you out and you have to work, you have to work even though you're a part time councillor.
Thanks. Councillor Burbak.
Thank you. I tend to agree with councillor Vazalakos and Ingram and Ritma. I, I think that. Attending in person is important. And if you think about orientation, that's right at the beginning of a council term. So people. Would probably have their schedules somewhat freed up knowing that they might get this new position. So. I, I think that especially at the beginning of the term for the orientation sessions, that it, that really is important. And I think people running for council hopefully would understand what the time commitments would be as part of council. So. You know, that you go into becoming a new councillor with your eyes open and it, it is a complex job. And you do have to work together with other people. So this is a great time to, to get to know your colleagues and to work together. So I think. Have, making sure that it's mandatory is, is a really good thing. Thanks.
All right. All right, we have the amendment. If the Mr. Band talk can read it back, that has already been passed and then to read it as part of the, the original motion, we'll take the question.
So through your worship, my understanding is that the motion as amended reads. That the code of conduct for members of council, local boards and committees by law one three three twenty eighteen. Be amended to add the following new section, orientation and training attendance by members of council, local boards and committees at orientation and training sessions. Paid for by the city shall be mandatory. Members unable to attend an orientation or training sessions due to illness, bereavement. Or travel shall notify the city clerk prior to the session. The city shall make available for, make available the resources and a recording of the session to the member. Members shall then be required to complete the form enclosed as appendix C declaring they read the material and or watch the session. To delete section forty seven and replace with the following new section forty seven. All formal complaints must be made in writing, setting out the reasonable and probable grounds for the allegation. The member has contravened the code of conduct on the complaint form affidavit attached as appendix B to this code of conduct. That all formal complaints must be filed with the integrity commissioner to determine if the matter is complaint with respect to non-compliance with the code of conduct. And not covered by any other applicable legislation or city policies. That any witnesses in support of the allegation must be identified on the complaint form. That the formal complaint shall include the name of the member alleged to have breached the code of conduct, the section of the code of conduct that was allegedly contravened. The date, time and location of the alleged contravention and that the integrity commissioner may request additional information from the complainant.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amended motion? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. It's carried.
Item seven point five is a proclamation regarding childhood cancer Canada. And there's a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaims September twenty twenty two. As childhood cancer Canada month in the city of Stratford.
Fooled by councillor Gaffney and councillor Burbak. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried.
Item seven point six is a resolution regarding assumption of Avon West Phase Two and Avon West Phase Three subdivision. And there is a motion that council authorize the assumption of the completed public services in the Avon West subdivision Phase Two and Phase Three. As described in the subdivision agreement with Werner Bromberg Limited, registered as instrument PC eight one six two nine, the first amending agreement registered as instrument. PC one three two three six zero and the second amending agreement registered as instrument PC one three two three six one. For Orange Street, Brown Street, Thomas Street, Riddell Street for the lots, plan, block and parts listed.
Thank you. So moved by councillor Ingram, seconded by councillor Vazalakos. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried.
Item seven point seven is a resolution regarding McCarthy Road West, point three M Reserve. And there is a motion that the city of Stratford declared part two, Plan forty four R dash six zero zero eight as public highway. And dedicated as forming part of McCarthy Road West.
Councillor Ritma and councillor Ingram moving in seconding. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed if any, and it's carried.
Item seven point eight is a resolution regarding the boathouse washroom project financing alternatives. And there is a motion that the report entail boathouse washroom project financing alternatives be received for information. And that direction be given to staff regarding the preferred funding option for the boathouse project.
Councillor Bunting.
And yeah, through you, your worship, I'd like to move option number one for the reasons already explained by Mr. Gribble earlier. And plus the fact that even before I became a councillor some eight years ago, I, I heard a, a lot of. Concerns from merchants on the York Street area and that particular block. About the lack of washroom space for tourists and citizens alike.
Thank you. Seconder for option one. Councillor BD, discussion. Councillor Ingram.
Thank you. I, I actually find this to be a, a really great project and a great benefit to the city and having been on the city center BIA. For a number of years now, I, I know that the merchants would also agree with this project. However. Because this has not been funded or, or contemplated through the current budget process. And it is a fairly, you know, a substantial amount of money, an unplanned amount of money. From our tax base, I do believe that the city needs to be directly involved just to oversee the project and. Going out for that RFP could be really beneficial in terms of reducing the cost. Related to the, the construction scope. So I'm going to vote against the motion.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Councillor seven.
Thank you. I, I do, I do agree with councillor Ingram. I, I think, you know, I think. You know, it's quite an expensive project. I think, I think if we had. An RFP with, with more things that we could. Bring that number down potentially. And I think it's, it's worth, it's worth trying. That's how I feel. So I don't support the motion.
Thank you. All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed if any? Three opposed, that carries.
Item seven point nine is correspondence regarding a special occasion permit request. And there is a motion that city council does not express concern with the issuance of a special occasion permit for the Stratford Slow Pitch Year End Tournament. To be held on September ninth through eleventh at twenty twenty two at the Packham Road Sports Complex. Subject to the necessary permits being obtained, compliance with the city's municipal alcohol risk policy and the required certificates of insurance being provided.
Councillor Clifford and councillor Ingram moving in seconding. All those in favor? Opposed if any, carried.
Item number eight is business for which previous notice has been given and there is none scheduled. Item nine is reports of the standing committees and item nine point one is report of the infrastructure, transportation and safety committee. And there's one report listed being nine point one point one, Stratford landfill, public input invited June twenty twenty two. And there is a motion that the report of the infrastructure, transportation and safety committee dated August eighth, twenty twenty two be adopted as printed.
Fooled by councillor Vazalakos, his chair, seconded by councillor Burbak. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried.
Item nine point two is report of the planning and heritage committee and there are four reports listed. Item nine point two point one, proposed exemption from signed by law one five nine dash two thousand four thirty five Waterloo Street North. Item nine point two point two, heritage Stratford recommendation regarding the intent to designate eighty six John Street South and ninety John Street South. Under part IV, section twenty nine of the Ontario Heritage Act. Item nine point two point three, heritage Stratford recommendation regarding the intent to designate eighty six John Street South and ninety John Street South. Under part IV, section twenty nine of the Ontario Heritage Act. And item nine point two point four, city of Stratford municipal heritage registry, non-designated properties proposed for inclusion. And there is a motion that the report to the planning and heritage committee dated August eighth, twenty twenty two be adopted as printed.
Councillor Ritma.
I will, I will, but wondering if we could take nine point two point one separately, please.
Your seconder for the report, councillor seven? And yes, councillor seven?
All right, I wasn't seconding. I was, I just had a request to take something else separate. I go, it's, or the motion is to take it separately. Is that?
Each one of them?
No, I just nine point two point one and nine point two point three.
Okay. Somebody else moved them or seconded them so that we can. Somebody else moved them or second them so that we can start that councillor Clifford. Thank you. So we'll call the question on items nine, two, two and nine, two, four, because they're doing collectively. Any discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item nine, two, one. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Councillor Ingram, councillor Vazalacos, councillor Ritzman.
Thank you. So I was not on the prevailing side of the motion to approve the three signs. In fact, I think I moved it. Am I able to make that motion again at this time?
Because it is at committee, yes, you can. And you can do that. You can also make the deferral motion that Ms. McKennitt had offered so that she could provide additional information as well.
I'm going to let councillor Ritzma speak and then I will come back.
Okay, councillor Ritzman.
And thank you, councillor Ingram. I was going to ask if we could defer this this item so that staff can have further discussion with with the applicant.
Seconder for a deferral? Councillor Ingram? There is discussion permitted on a deferral, but I don't see any councillor Vazalacos.
I'll just quickly sort of state that I'm in support of a deferral if it allows for continued dialogue around this property. Simply because I'm one of the reasons that we were hearing a lot about was like about the refusing the sign the sign variance because of the heritage nature of the property. But I think that there is a, you know, value in understanding that heritage properties that are not viable or used or loved or part of the community or are not fiscally sort of viable end up with demolition by neglect. And so I think it really is valuable to have a continued conversation with the owner of the property to understand what the needs are and what helps keep that building, you know, a viable community asset.
Councillor Ingram.
Yeah, and just in addition to that, we did have a lot of comments from council regarding the heritage components and the heritage aspect of that property, which is really strictly related to the two certain aspects of the building. And we did defer that application to obtain a comment from Heritage Stratford, which they did. And then we choose not chose not to take. So I do think, you know, deferral so that staff and the applicant can come back with a positive report and a positive outcome would be a good thing.
Great. There's an old adage that says staff have an obligation to give us the information and council has the right to make a bad decision. So let's not forget that, too. Is there anything further on this? All those in favor of the deferral? Opposed, if any, that's deferred. Item nine, two, four, with regard to the Heritage Registry for Dawn Designated, sorry, nine point two point three. Heritage Stratford Recommendation Regarding the Intent to Designate Eighty Six John Street. It's removed and seconded, discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Two opposed, that's carried.
Item nine point three is report of the Finance and Labour Relations Committee, and there are five reports listed. Item nine point three point one, Destination Stratford Update Two. Item nine point three point two, Purchasing Policy Exemption for Crane Service Body Retrofit. Item nine point three point three, Electricity Procurement, City of Stratford. Item nine point three point four, Treasure Statement for Development Charges and Parkland Reserve Funds Twenty Twenty One. And item nine point three point five, Twenty Twenty Two Community Grant Appeal Request. And there is a motion that the report of the Finance and Labour Relations Committee dated August eighth, twenty twenty two be adopted as printed.
Fooled by councillor Gaffney, seconded by councillor Bunting, discussion. Councillor Seven?
Could we take nine point three point five separately, please?
Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, we'll look at calling the question on nine, three, one, two, nine, three, four. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item nine, three, five is moved and seconded, discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Three opposed, that's carried. Next item.
Item ten is notice of intent and there is none scheduled. Item eleven is reading of the bylaws. And there are four listed. Eleven, one, being assumption of completed public services in the Avon West subdivision Phases Two and Three. Eleven, two, contribution agreement for the electric vehicle charging station expansion project. Item eleven, three, amend code of conduct for members of council, local boards and committees, noting the amendment to the motion earlier. And eleven, four, dedication of part of McCarthy Road West as public highway. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Ritzma, second by councillor Ingram. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. We'll move to first and second reading. Councillor Vazalacos and councillor Burbak. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Go to third and final reading, councillor Gaffney and councillor BD, discussion. All those in favor? Any? That's carried. All right. Our next item.
Item twelve is the consent agenda and council at this time can advise if there are any matters they wish to consider on as listed.
Councillor Ingram, councillor Vazalacos, councillor Burbak.
Thank you. I'd like to support CA dash twenty twenty two dash zero nine one, which is the resolution from the town of Aurora regarding private members Bill C dash two, three, three, Kira's Law.
Seconder for that councillor Burbak. All those in favor? That's carried. Councillor Basil, sorry councillor Burbak, I believe you had your hand up.
Yeah, same item. Thank you.
And there was another person, I believe councillor Vazalacos, same item?
Same item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else on the consent agenda? If not, we'll go to new business. Seeing, oh, councillor seven, sorry.
All right, yeah, I did have a question for staff about the recently passed MAT tax, the bylaw, sorry. I just had. I've had several residents reach out and regarding, we sort of had discussion about this when the item was up about possible accommodators who have under a certain amount of rooms or minimal rooms to be exempt from that possibility. I just wanted to clarify, would that require a reconsideration to have that change made to the MAT? Or is that something that after the consultation that's going to take place would come back and then could be changed at that point?
All of this CAO answer that one.
And I apologize for putting you on the spot. If you don't have the answer, that's okay.
So through you, your worship, and I stand to be corrected by the clerk. But it is my understanding that council adopted the MAT bylaw at a previous council meeting. Therefore, to consider prior to considering any changes to that bylaw that was recently adopted would require a motion to reconsider by council. And those procedures are set out in the council procedural bylaw with respect to how to go about listing on the next available council meeting a motion to reconsider.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Anything further? If not, I'll take a motion to recess to reconvene in committee. We'll take a five minute break to allow some people do a few things, councillor Ingram and councillor Ritzma. And we'll begin with social services. All those in favor? And that's carried. We'll see you shortly. All right. Just give everyone a chance to come back. Councillor Bunting, due to the absence of councillor Henderson this evening, would you please chair social services forces as the vice chair?
I'll be pleased to. Thank you.
Turn it over to you.
Yes, I'd like to call the Social Services Committee to order. We have regrets from Chair Bonnie Henderson, who's feeling unwell this evening. Are there any disclosures of peculiary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item three is subcommittee minutes, which are there attached for background purposes. Item four, delegations non-scheduled. Item five is the Director of Social Services, five point one, annual community, community income tax clinic. And as is customary by Chair Henderson, I would ask the the Director of Social Services to highlight some items from that report.
Thank you through the chair. Bring first report up, and this is the the social services with with the income tax. This year's participation level, we saw post pre-tem, pre pandemic numbers, we had over a hundred participants participate. And we would like to thank the companies that provided this year free of charge. The the tax, EDO Canada, LLP, Family Company and the Catching and Pierce Professional Corporation. As they were able to provide income tax for many of our many of our clients who would otherwise have problems with with having them pleaded.
Yeah, thank you. There's a recommendation at the end of the report. Moved by councillor Ritzma and seconded by councillor Burbak. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Item five point two. Identify need with the homelessness portfolio for enhanced staffing. Again, back to the director.
Thank you. Through the chair, this report outlines the current needs to address the service gap that we are seeing within social services. The statistics in this report shows the increased need of our local members. The internal service delivery for homeless individuals, as well as the coordination and collaboration required to support our external partners, has gone beyond the capacity of a shared portfolio and requires a dedicated staff. Therefore, we are requesting that our department is proved to hire a supervisor of homelessness and housing stability to help address the increased service delivery needs that we are seeing.
Yeah, thank you for that. Mo, sorry, councillor Burbak?
I was going to move the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Vazalacos, seconding? All those in favor?
I actually have a question, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't see you.
It's okay. I was going to ask. I understand there isn't a cost in twenty twenty two. How much is the cost for twenty twenty three? That's my one question for the director. And if if the person we hire is on holidays, like who takes the place when that person's on holidays as a supervisor?
Thank you through the chair. With the financial implications of current, as we said in the report, the first for the first year, we won't see the implications. The second year, we are projecting sixty to eighty thousand dollars for the new position, which would be cost shared with our partnering municipalities for net costs to Stratford of approximately twenty four thousand to thirty three thousand. And sorry, in regards to your second question through the chair, at this time we would have other management staff offset to while the person is on holidays. So the manager of Ontario Works, the manager of housing supervisor of social services we have as well.
Any other questions or comments? It's been seconded and been motions been made. Call the question. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on. Item number six, I'm flipping between screens here. Sorry about that. Item number six, two hundred Britannia Street Affordable Housing Project Update. Again, please, Director.
Thank you through the Chair. This is just a progress report for 200 Britannia, the affordable housing project that is going on. We wanted to report that at this time, it does seem to be on schedule and within the current budget as we move forward. With that, hoping to have residency for March, April 2023.
That's good news. Thank you very much for that. This is staff recommendation. Councillor Ritzma and councillor Ingram. Any questions, any comments? Oh, councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, in your report on this, there was some noise about the possibility of it going above the stipulator price. I'm hoping that's not a serious worry.
Through the Chair, we wanted to take a proactive measure. And we had the developer go out to the contractors to ensure at this point that they didn't see any extreme cost escalation. So at this point, we are not seeing anticipated to any degree.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number seven, homemakers and nurses' services contract renewal. Again, Director, if you would.
Thank you through the Chair. The objective of this report is to consider granting approval for the Director of Social Services to renew the agreement with One Care Home and Community Support Services, in which they will administer the homemaker and nurses' services for eligible individuals who require aid. One care employees provide in-home feeding supports to those that both, that qualify both medically and financially. These supports will allow clients to live independently in their own home and will assist in learning basic skills to offer further independence. Coordination of services will assist in preventing evictions and provide stable environment that is safe for both clients and support staff.
Thank you. There is a motion. Councillor Gaffney, you wish to make a motion? And councillor Burbak? Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor? Sorry, any comments or questions? Seeing none? Call the question, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And the final adjournment? Anyways, to councillor Ingram and councillor Vassalakos, thank you. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bunting. We'll go to Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee and it'll be chaired this evening. And the vice chair, councillor Burbak.
Thank you. Item one, I'd like to call the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee to order. Item two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest to the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item three is subcommittee minutes for your perusal. Item four are delegations and there are non-scheduled. Item five is a report of the chief billing official. And 5.1 is the accommodation licensing bylaw. So at this time, I'd like to call on the chief billing official, Mr. De Weard, if you'd like to give us an overview of the report. And also maybe making a note of the difference between this bylaw, which we're going to be introducing tonight, and the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you very much through the Chair. I'm happy to present tonight our accommodation or proposed accommodation licensing bylaw. So you have in front of you a report and the draft bylaw for discussion. And our objective tonight is to give council an update on the progress, but also to ask your approval so that we can have a public meeting as per the notice policy bylaw, so that we can host this public meeting. So a little bit of background. In February of 2022, council did approve the new comprehensive zoning bylaw. And that enables the short-term rental accommodations or the STRA units to be permitted within single detached, semi-detached, converted and townhouse dwelling units. And staff have also identified other units in which short-term accommodations apply. And those are in in inns, hostels and rooming and boarding houses. So again, short-term accommodation refers to the accommodations of 28 days or less. So as per the attached accommodation licensing bylaw, we will have one bylaw to deal with all short-term accommodations. And that will include items such as bed and breakfast. And it will actually replace our current bed and breakfast bylaw with this new bylaw. Coming out with new terminology that all short-term accommodations will fall under. Couple other items to highlight before we take any questions tonight. We did look at different municipalities for, you know, similar size and more structured to what the city of Stratford offers for services. And some of those municipalities were the Blue Mountains, Niagara on the Lake, Fort Erie, Huntsville and Lampton Shores. And that was kind of integrated into the report. There are certain short-term accommodations that are only provided for the 180 days per calendar year in accordance with the zoning bylaw. And again, those relate specifically to the accommodations whereby the owner would leave the residence for the time. Touch briefly on the fee structure. We have considered different options for the fee structure. And what we are proposing with this bylaw is that we would have a moratorium for the first year on fees. And after the first year, we would be able to gather information on items such as the number of actual units, short-term units within the city, as well as have a better grasp on the amount of hours, the timeframe that it takes for staff to complete inspections and whatnot. And it is our, it is our hope and our goal that we, in the first year, are able to get many of these, many, if not all of these, short-term accommodations within the city licensed under this bylaw. I would also like to touch on the enforcement provisions in on our approach. So we do hope to have a focused educational approach as far as our enforcement, that we would start with education. And then move into a staged, you know, enforcement approach with active enforcement as we move forward with this accommodation bylaw. At this point, giving you a bit of an overview, if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those for you tonight.
Are there any questions? Councillor Ritzma, go ahead.
No, I want to thank Mr. De Weard for the presentation and I would like to move the staff recommendation.
And councillor Ingram, seconding. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Councillor Seven?
Thank you. I just wanted to know if either Mr. De Weard or Ms. Thompson could clarify, just for the public watching, that sort of timeline and the process moving forward. So that we're not actually approving the bylaw tonight, but that there will be a process moving forward and what that will look like briefly.
Okay, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. Through the Chair, then in response to the question. So at this time, we are in committee, we are seeking approval from council or from committee to proceed with scheduling a public meeting as required under our notice bylaw. This item will be going to the special council meeting on Wednesday. If approved by council, sorry, committee this evening, with respect to formalizing that decision to hold the public meeting. Staff would then proceed to follow the notice policy, give notice of that public meeting, schedule it, perhaps sometime during the week of August 22. And then hold that public meeting. Staff would then prepare a follow-up report based on the feedback that council heard at that public meeting. And then come forward in September with a follow-up report for committee's consideration with respect to summary of the public input. And then for direction of council to proceed with implementation and adoption of a licensing bylaw with whatever the effective date that council still wishes to have in place. That is our process that we are recommending for committee.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and thank you, Mr. De Weard.
Thank you. Councillor Vassalakos.
And just for clarity for some of the people who are watching, because I did have some communications on the weekend. The public meeting process also allows for people to make written submissions to be included in, for consideration in that, in that final report that comes back to council, correct?
Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. Through the Chair, yes, so there are different ways that people can submit their comments in writing, in person, and all of those will be gathered together. Prior to the public meeting, at the public meeting and shortly after the public meeting, they will be summarized and all of the comments received will be provided to council for their further consideration when the follow-up staff report comes forward in September.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item six is the report of the manager of environmental sciences. And 6.1 is basement insulation subsidy program updates. So I'm not sure, I think Mr. Bose might be here for a little overview. Sorry, Mr. Pinklaw, go ahead.
Sorry, through the Chair. Effectively, this report is to update the existing basement isolation subsidy program documentations, as well as the subsidy rebate amounts. This subsidy was put in place in response to floods that occurred in around 2002. Initially, it was only open to the residents that were impacted directly by the floods. However, this has been relaxed and practices to open up the program to more people. This program's subsidy rates were established in 2005 and haven't been updated since. Effectively, the request for subsidy increases about 25% to reflect current market prices. The budget amount this year for this program is $30,000 with only $8,000 being spent. So we don't anticipate this to impact the 2022 or future budgets going on. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the Director? Seeing none, there is a staff recommendation. Councillor Vassalakos moving and councillor Ingram seconding. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item seven is a report of the manager of public work. 7.1 is Blue Box Services with Circular Materials Ontario for the transition period of May 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2025. I'm seeing if the Director is going to speak to this again. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Pinklaw.
To the Chair first, just wanted to clarify if the Deputy Clerk, the manager of public works is not available to speak to this report? That's fine, if he's not, that's okay. Okay, so effectively, this major report is to request that staff be permitted to basically negotiate terms with Circular Materials Ontario for the transition period from the current Blue Box program to one of the extended producer responsibilities. So just again to reiterate, this is basically from May 1st, 2024 to a point of December 31st, 2025 only. And we're not looking at housing pack services post 2026, when the full program comes into place. Um, in essence, just keeping at a high level. The Blue Box regulations were initially changed June 3rd, 2021. Were basically set up that the producers would set up their own rules for how they would operate the transition program. This was later amended by, in April 13th, 2022 to recognize that basically producers can have a bit more freedom of control on how they think they should operate the system. Removing some of their initial legislative requirements under the transition period. So basically, what's happened here is that there's no longer multiple producers that potentially could be looked into providing service for the city during this transition. This is being picked up by the Common Collection Systems Administrator being Circular Materials Ontario. And they basically represent all producers at this point on how things will be managed. There isn't much option for us to consider for this transition period. The question more is do we want to maintain the existing service standards for this 18-month transition period? Otherwise, it would turn over to Circular Materials to run as they see fit. In the interest of city maintaining minimal disruption to residents, our recommendation is that we enter into this agreement with Circular Materials Ontario to maintain our current contract. This helps ensure that we avoid the penalty clause of approximately $490,000 that we involve in term our current collections contract. The remuneration that we would receive tentatively through the initial draft rooms that we've seen would mean that that they're favorable in terms of how the city currently operates its services. So there's a minimal impact, the thing that would need to be covered is the certain services that we do provide to, for example, commercial and industrial facilities would need to be covered by, effectively by the municipality. So that total cost is estimated to be approximately $60,000 to $65,000 for this transition period. However, the remuneration for collection services would be picked up by Circular Materials. So really, it's overall significant production in our operating costs starting in 2024. I think that's in a nutshell. So since this agreement is literally just represented to us in mid-June and still being finalized and being discussed with municipalities across Ontario. The signing off on this agreement may occur during a period of restricted access and that's why this report's here for council. And basically, this report asks for the authority of the CEO to sign any agreement if it happens to fall under the period of restricted access. Essentially, Circular Materials Ontario needs to know what a response is, because otherwise they'll have to fill in providing services for that transition. So be happy to answer any questions of council.
Thank you, Mr. Pinklaw. Councillor Gaffney.
I'll move the staff or the subcommittee recommendation, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And councillor Ritzma, seconding. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item eight is a report of the project manager. 8.1 is bicycle lanes on Fraser Drive and Forman Avenue. And I think Mr. Botzma is here to speak to it. Go ahead.
Yes, so through the Chair, the original report discussed residents' concerns related to the bike lanes on Fraser Drive and Forman Avenue. One concern that was not addressed in the report was suggesting to move one of the two bike lanes to an adjacent street in order to create on-street parking on Fraser and Forman. This concept was reviewed, but since it was a deviation from the accepted subdivision design and bike and pedestrian master plan route, both subject to extensive public consultation, was not further evaluated. Since the May meeting, we've done a preliminary review of dividing the bike lanes onto the adjacent local streets and see challenges related to the geometry of the streets. So like Fraser and Forman Avenue, they're both 11 and a half meter wide compared to the eight and a half local streets that are in the area. So the additional three meter allows for properly sized bike lanes in each direction. And then obviously the two unobstructed travel lanes for vehicles. Moving a bike lane onto the adjacent local streets will create a substandard road of seven meters and would also result in a loss of parking along the bike lanes, impact the traffic flow and could have negative impacts on cyclist safety. In order to achieve a standard roadway layout with a standard roadway layout with one bike lane, we'd have to do adjustments to the curve that would require significant physical and financial impacts. So overall, Fraser and Forman are functioning as they should as collector routes for all modes of transportation. The road layout is consistent with similar routes within the city and no changes are recommended. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time or there is a staff recommendation? Counselor Itzma.
Yeah, just and it's not directly related, but somewhat related. And at a previous meeting I'd asked and the director of Prinklaw was had mentioned that there and it goes along with this. There was some discussion about some trial means of calming traffic speed, particularly on Foreman. I'm wondering if there's any update on that at this time. And perhaps you haven't had time to look into that. So.
Yeah, in conjunction with Public Works, we've started to look into it and identified a few pilot locations, but Fraser Foreman wasn't one of them. With that said, we do propose or we're planning on putting a double white line on Fraser and Foreman that will create kind of a narrower traffic lane and that's commonly used for traffic calming traffic calming strategy to reduce speed. So we don't have the details for the pilot programs established yet, but like I said, they won't be on Fraser and Foreman.
Thank you.
Counselor Vasilekos.
I'll move the staff recommendation to receive the report for information.
Thank you. And Counselor Ingram seconding.
I also have a comment, if I may. Um, for Mr. Botzma, I'm wondering if we have considered painting the full width of the bike lane in, you know, a green color as other municipalities have done, just to make it very clear that that is a traveled bike lane.
Yeah, go ahead.
We haven't considered that at this time. I'm not sure if that's commonly seen more so at intersections, but it's we haven't considered this time. It's something we can look into, but at this time we haven't looked at that.
Counselor Vasilekos.
I was just going to say as a follow-up to that, I really like the idea of doing that. Once we're we're getting close to filling in a lot of gaps, having a lot of contiguous cycling infrastructure. So I could see that very soon we'd be in a position where we could actually do some of that painting and then not have to be transitioning people from one to another. And and it would it would actually probably be a really great wayfinding for people that are using that that contiguous system.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I'd just like to add as well, just a comment. I think the double line is a is a great idea for traffic calming and lane narrowing, and I would love to see that on McCarthy as well because it's very wide and the bike lanes could use a bit of a buffer there as well. Just just a thought. So the motion has been put forward and seconded. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? No, that carries. Thank you very much. Item nine is a report of the clerk. 9.1 is the overnight parking strategy. And I'm wondering if Mr. Bantalk or somebody would like to speak to that.
Through the chair. So this report coming back following a direction from the Finance and Labor Relations Committee for staff to review implementing an overnight parking strategy. So just at a high level, the three areas focused on in the strategy are looking at enhanced relationships with Stratford Police Services and recognizing their enforcement assistance in overnight parking. Enhanced education campaign as well as a review of the set fines and offenses. So those first two items, staff have already administratively introduced several measures which kind of address increased awareness of an education on overnight parking as well as tracking of areas that are more prone to concern. And then the recommendation before committee tonight addresses the review of the set fine and offenses being to introduce a new offense for the obstruction of municipal snow clearing operations. And then seeking direction to apply to the Ministry of Attorney General to address new set fines. And I would just note that both the new offense and the set fines are consistent in compared to municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Bantalk. Does anyone have any question for Mr. Bantalk or comments? Seeing none, we do have a staff recommendation moved by Counselor Vasilekos, seconded by Counselor Ingram. And if there are no further comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor, I did actually have a comment on that one. I think you just missed my hand. So I I think this is a really good step forward. I do, however, in the past month, I've had three calls about noise issues or construction starting prior to 8:30 in the morning, which of course our municipal enforcement services or municipal enforcement officers are required to inspect if if the police are unavailable to go to and our municipal enforcement officers don't start until 8:30 in the morning. So I do think it's time that we start to consider the need for overnight municipal enforcement officers because the police are not always available to attend to these types of issues. So I would like to make a referral to the budget for consideration of overnight municipal enforcement officers to be added.
Is there a second for that? Counselor Vasilekos? Any other comments, discussion? Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I would just ask like if it's going to hire someone for the whole night, is it only starting like when it's dark? I don't think it's happening that much. So I wouldn't support a whole overnight, but to start earlier, I certainly would support that.
Counselor Ingram.
Yeah, in this case, it would assist with overnight parking. It would assist with cars parking in the winter. So snow removal hindrance. It would assist with construction start times before our noise by law permits. There are a number of different things that this could permit with or could assist with any noise beyond 11:00 PM. So if there was, you know, an 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM sort of timeframe that these officers would be working, it would assist with all of those items, the overnight parking, the noise, the construction beginning before the noise by law permits. And anything else that that would come up during those timeframes.
Counselor Gaffney.
Before we vote on it, can you just repeat what it is, please? Mr. Deputy.
Go ahead, Mr. Bantalk. If you wouldn't mind reading us back what you think the motion is.
So through the chair, my understanding of the motion is that position of an overnight municipal enforcement officer be referred to the 2023 budget deliberations.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney, go ahead.
Like in my estimation, shouldn't we be getting a report on whether it's necessary before we start spending money on it? Like, I'd much rather see a report from staff making the case for the need, not just somebody called me and said they're starting work early. And then we're paying somebody 60 or 70 or 80 or $90,000 a year to answer six calls a year. So I'm going to vote against it because I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. Thanks.
There any other comments or discussion? Counselor Seven.
No, just to say that I don't support the motion on the floor for similar reasons. That's Counselor Gaffney mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Vasilekos.
I was just going to say this is a referral to budget discussion. So there is the, I mean, usually when we have a referral to budget discussion for a position, there is some analysis that comes with it. We're not creating the position today. We're just adding it to the list of service expansions that we consider at budget time. And that would also include staff, you know, giving us an overview of what that cost looks like, what are the times? It, I'm, my assumption would be they would also give us an indication of of how often this might need to be, you know, how useful it would be, what the calls would look like. There, you know, the deputy clerk talked about a really good relationship, building a really good relationship with the police services. And they could also weigh in on whether something like that would help them to to bridge some of those. I don't want to call them non-urgent, but but, you know, police officers are very, very expensive and what they could be doing overnight as opposed to an enforcement officer could actually help with operations. So I think I it didn't occur to me at the moment that a referral to budget was going to be that we've decided that we're going to spend that money.
Any other comments before I call the question? Mayor Matheson, go ahead.
I think it's worth a dialogue with Stratford Police Service. They do have special constables already that do handle a variety of non-police matters. And it could be something that you can look at combining with some special constable hours, which would be an expansion probably to what they already have in place, but it could be cheaper alternative than using police.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I will call the question. All those in favor? Okay, and those opposed? And I am in favor, but I guess that's a tie-in. So that's defeated. Okay, item 10.2 Advisory Committee and Outside Board Minutes for your perusal and item 11 is adjournment. Counselor Bunting and Counselor Seven seconding. All those in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
All right, our next committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item one, call, I'll call to order this meeting of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee. We have one regret from Counselor Henderson. Item two, disclosure of peculiar interest in the general nature thereof. Counselor Vasilekos.
Item 4.1, which is the optimism.
Sorry, through the chair, you're muted there.
Thank you. Item three, delegations, non-scheduled. Item four, report of the Director, Infrastructure Development Services. Item 4.1, optimism place expansion, request for financial support. Moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Ritzma. Does anyone have any questions on the report? Counselor, sorry, Deputy Clerk.
Through the chair. Sorry, I just wanted to note the second part of the recommendation there is seeking direction on preferred options with respect to
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you very much. Sorry, somebody's. Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at the the first option, which is granting optimism place a grant that would cover their fees. The reason I'm bringing that forward is because I do think that optimism place is a really critical community partner for us. And I think it's a way that the city can support the optimism place going forward. I did have a question, however, or a suggestion. I'm wondering if if that grant, I'm not sure if the timing would work, but would optimism place be an organization that would qualify for a community grant? And could we put this through in next year's budget as as a community grant proposal? I'm not sure who I'm directing that question to, but maybe
So the, I guess the big issue is that in order for optimism place to proceed with their their proposed plan, they would have to pay these fees upfront. Or it would have to be addressed through the the building and planning process. So if like if they're if they're wanting to proceed and council wants to support this, then I think that the that the funding of it really needs to come from a current source rather than deferring it to an upcoming budget. That said, certainly, you know, there could be a temporary funding source identified if that was so inclined, but that's kind of just shifting from one, I'll say one plot to another. So I wouldn't see a whole lot of value in that, but it's certainly something you could consider.
I keep getting, I keep getting muted. I don't know if I've done it or somebody else is. Counselor Clifford.
It's a not-for-profit. Like the other not-for-profits, like the YMCA, when they build or harsh. Has that been our experience, got to charge for profits? And and the concern I have, it's a great organization. I agree 100%, but if we agree to this, I think it's a precedent that would be setting for any not-for-profit that wants to ask us. And it is a substantial amount of dollars. So, you know, I'd have to get some staff information, what we've done in the past for not-for-profits. We've got harsh on the construction right now. I'd like to know what happened there and if the Y decided to build. So I do have some concerns with this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Director.
Just one comment to make that this report is in front of you as it is as branding of restricted acts. And wherever the outcome is decided by council could be impacted by that period. So just bring that out there.
And I had a supplemental to Counselor Clifford's question that I have is not only would be we'd be making this contribution as a a part of the normal fee structure, then we also are paying the actual costs of the work to get done. Because these these figure, these fees cover operations when we're talking about building permits and so on and so forth. So I have the same. I agree with Counselor Clifford that this is a good project that has to move forward, but is this the right way to go about it in asking the city for contribution to the project? Any other questions or any suggestions on preferred options in respect to this request for support? Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. I think I'd like to make a deferral request in order for staff to go back. Sorry, Counselor Gaffney, I think we're getting some feedback from you. In order for staff to go back to optimism place to see if they would be able to front end all of the costs and then come back and apply for the grant program. So if I could, if I could move that deferral to staff, please.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Could I get a second for that? Counselor Burbak? Any other? Any questions on that? And Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but we vote on on that as a referral motion?
Through the chair. Apologies, I heard it as a deferral. Is that correct?
Sorry, I meant referral.
So through the chair, there would be no further debate.
Okay, then I'll call the referral motion. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So, Mr. Clerk, can we move on to the next item then?
Through the chair.
Thank you. Item five, report of the Director, Corporate Services. Thank you. Item five, report of the Director, Corporate Services. 5.1, proposed 2023 budget process and tentative schedule. Moved by Counselor Ritzma, seconded by Counselor Ingram. Any questions or comments on on this item, Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I like how we're going to do it. The only thing in the background information, it talks historic practice in some municipalities, including has been to alter direction. And then it goes on and says they want to change that. I have some problems with that. I think it should be a combination of staff input and council direction. And I know it's quite subtle, but if if council is going to make a recommendation, it's up to staff to give the information that is required. So like, it's easy to say, I want a percent increase, but if staff comes and says, well, here's the problem we have this year. So I mean, it's not up to this council anyways. It'll be the next council, but I think it should be a combination between the two of them. The council has a certain responsibility, the staff has a certain responsibility, and I think it's a joint effort. So I just and I did talk to the director, like I talked to her, not what I'm saying right now, but I did ask her about it. So I just think it's a combination and I'd be happy that way, quite frankly.
Any response to that? Madam Director?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I don't have any concerns with that approach either. You know, certainly council can provide staff with some target directions, absolutely. I think it was just presented that way to, in an effort to try to keep the process moving along and not running into any sort of issues with respect to the unknowns that are still ahead of council and staff in the process, but absolutely that that recommendation can be amended.
Counselor Vassalacos.
So I don't Okay, I don't know why that's happening. Sorry. I don't have an issue with the collaborative process between staff and council. I do have an issue with council setting, like council says we want to keep it at 2% because that doesn't have actually any meaning in terms of when you start to look at the budget. Only because unless you start looking at service levels, unless you start looking at large projects, unless you start saying, does that mean 2% from every single department? But some departments have more pressure some years than others or have different needs or so. If we can build in a collaborative process, that's fine. I just don't want it to be that idea where council wants to see, you know, we want to cap it at 2%. And then not taking the challenge on of coming back with some substantive ideas around around service level changes or whatever they want to cut. If somebody says they want to cap something, they have to be prepared to have a conversation with staff, with council and with the public, but what they're cutting. And I think that's where I have the challenge.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalacos. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I would, I would make a motion for an amendment to add in that it is a collaborative approach between council and staff and that you know, we could set a target at another day on the road a bit, but oh, can you hear me? Okay, now, okay. So I, I think, you know, I don't think we need to set a target tonight, but at an upcoming meeting, we could set that target. But I think yeah, I do want to see that amended to have a collaborative, to have council set some type of target. It doesn't have to be a strict target, but something so staff have at least an idea or a range that would be chosen by council to aim for.
Would our mover and seconder be in agreement with that? Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Burbak, wasn't? Am I being heard? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I may be losing my communications. Mr. Kirk.
Through the chair, I just wanted to note, it sounds like we may be getting feedback from your audio. If perhaps when someone else is speaking, to just make sure that you're muted. It appears like that might be the feedback that we're getting on some of the audio.
Okay, I apologize. Then I will, I will ask the question again and then my, I'll mute my sound, but the mover and seconder on that original motion, are they okay with the amended motion?
I would be okay with it.
So I think I'm the seconder, so I'd like to speak to it. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Vassalacos. I think that I like the idea of collaboration. I don't love the idea of setting targets. I don't think it's helpful in the overall process. I mean, obviously, council will want as low a possible rate as we can afford. But I don't know if, you know, collaboration, yes, I'd be happy to add that in. But setting a target, I'm not too fond of that idea.
Counselor Seven.
Yeah, so I do want the amendment to be, I mean, I don't know how, I mean, we have the budget meetings, but if we're not, if we're not setting a target that staff are aware of, I mean, I think it absolutely, you know, it should have some meaning and I think it would help staff, you know, if we're saying we want a target of 5% versus if we're saying we want a target of 2%, I think that helps some direction. I think, like I said, it's not a firm target. The tough decisions and the service levels and things would absolutely be at budget meeting for council to deliver, but I do want a collaboration piece to include a target from council. So that is in the amendment that I'm looking for.
Counselor Ingram and then Counselor Vassalacos.
Thank you. So I'm absolutely all for collaboration, and I think that's the way that the budget system has always worked between us, you know, staff has always brought forward ideas. Council's welcome to take them or welcome to to say, please go back to the drawing board. That's the way it has always worked. I don't think that any of our staff have ever brought forward a target rate that has been more than what any of us could imagine. I mean, staff are not going to bring forward something that is going to be out of the realm of possibility. They are always going to be frugal. They are always going to bring back the best possible rate that they can without cutting services. And so I think, you know, they know that any council, any council member is going to want to be conservative in terms of their fiscal responsibilities. And so I don't see the need for setting a target rate. I think staff are already going to provide the best possible professional advice they can.
Counselor Vassalacos.
And just to piggyback on that, there is a reason why most municipalities are, I mean, a lot of them are going to serve this base budget, budgeting process where they come to council and say, given the conditions, given all the details, given the minutiae of what is happening with operations, this is what it costs to provide the current services. Understanding that they have made every effort to actually streamline and find efficiencies and everything else. I think that is a, I think that is a more, and it's a modern, and it's a smart approach. So that then a council, then it becomes incumbent on council to say, is that acceptable to us? And if it is not acceptable to us, looking at the services provided and asking themselves the difficult questions of what services would you cut? I, I do not see it as staff's responsibility to be making those which are essentially political decisions around services. We just, I mean, councils of the past, well, I mean, provincial governments tell us what services we have to provide and service levels. Councils of the past have decided what additional services we provide and what we do. It's then up to us. So unless that target has quantitative and financial budgeting meaning, I don't see the point of it. And, and, and I say that because there, and I go back to because it's a blanket amount across asking departments to provide a myriad of services that are very, very different to come up with a blanket cut is not reasonable, especially if you look at, let's say, social services versus, let's say, engineering or construction, like from year to year, it could change. And, and so I think it also will set up, it sets up a siloed approach where every department then, we have departments collaborating really well, and we want them to collaborate. We want them to talk about certainly corporate leadership team about what every department needs to succeed and how they can support each other. If we go to a target approach, we're saying we want you to come up with, let's say, a 2% or a 3% or a range of 2% to 5%. You do set up a bit of, you reset up a siloed approach to budgeting for the departments, and that's something that I don't want to see going back to.
Counselor Seven. Thank you. So I guess two main points that I'd like to get across is that this is not, this is something that's mentioned in the report that is the historical thing that has been done. Certainly, if we I would be interested to hear Ms. Kruger, Ms. Thompson's input on the notion that's being put forward here, that essentially the targets given by council have have minimal to no impact on the budget that is brought forward. I think, I think there is absolutely an impact. I think you know, this is, this is council's responsibility and I, I'm having a hard time understanding why every year when this comes to council, there's a target and every year there's a big discussion about the target. And we're sort of hearing tonight that that target has no bearing and it doesn't really have an effect. So I don't think that that is accurate. I think it absolutely does. And if it doesn't, then it absolutely should. This is a direction from council. And to another point, if we're looking at this even to compare this to people's personal finances, you know, there's a lot people who think they don't need to set a budget because they think they're spending efficiently and they think that they're only spending what they need to are always surprised when they go to set a budget. And there's a reason for that. And so setting a target does not mean that we think staff are being irresponsible or not working their due diligence with money. I think it's, it sets an expectation from council and our job is to provide direction. I don't really understand the pushback or the issue with, as I mentioned, that collaborative approach, which includes a target, but does not preclude staff to make the difficult decisions that council should be making. And that's, that's where I'll leave it.
Counselor Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand what our director is trying to do. I am just saying, if we could, okay, we, we aren't going to set a target to start with, and I understand that unless we have the information, but like for instance, it's possible to have like a surplus from the previous, like from 2021 to 2022 or 2022 to 2023. There's all kinds of things, but I'm just saying if staff could get up, could give us the information as we do in every budget. And then we look at it and we say, well, the target is like 5% after we've heard from staff. I mean, just, I think council has a certain responsibility as staff has a responsibility, but just to say, we're going to let staff and obviously staff have the time and the energy to spend on, I'm a part-time counselor, but I I still think council has some responsibility after getting the information. Because quite frankly, a department can choose to spend more money or less money. I've been on council for 25 years and I've seen I've seen staff say, well, we really don't need that. We'd like it, but we don't need it. So I just think we need, and we talk about like collaboration, and I think we have the collaboration first and then council comes up with a percentage or amount or whatever, but I think it's a team effort and just when I read this report, it just seems to take the team out of it. And I think we are we are elected as counselors to make decisions in conjunction with the staff. So I just, I mean, that's all I was trying to get at, quite frankly. At the end, council has to make the final decision anyways, regardless of what staff says. So anyways, that's my little spiel.
Thank you. Counselor Vassalacos.
I'm just going to make the point that when I say that actually setting a target, I think is actually aggregating our responsibility to the budgeting process and what our responsibility is. So when I say that we need to take responsibility and you receive a base budget and then then council does the work, like my point isn't that I'm actually absolving ourselves of responsibility. I'm actually asking ourselves to take more responsibility. And I know that sounds very difficult. I'm having a difficult time explaining it, but it's also because the reality is is that municipal budget financing isn't like a household budget. It is far more complicated and requires a level of expertise at the operational levels that actually none of us actually have necessarily. We can do a lot of it, but staff are the ones that have the expertise and the professionalism that we require to know what that base budget is. And so I really have a hard time explaining it, but by telling my fellow counselors that we can have that we want to set it, let's say, at 5%, but asking staff to come up with a 5% is actually aggregating our responsibility to figure out how we get to 5%. And that's, that's the point. If staff come back to us and say, the base budget is 6%, then we say, well, we want it to look, we want it to be 3%. Then it's incumbent on us to look at service levels and decide what we're going to do. And so in some ways, I'm hearing a little bit about our responsibilities and I'm trying to up the level of responsibility that we take around budgeting.
Thank you. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Vassalacos. And I was thinking along the same lines in that yes, to collaboration, and then if we're going to set a goal for the budget, it should be amongst council. We should set a goal for ourselves, not necessarily put that responsibility onto staff. And I think that's the point that you were trying to make, Counselor Vassalacos, that it's, it's up to us to decide in the end, and staff can help us get there by figuring out what it is that needs to be cut. But in the end, we have to make the decisions. When we set a goal for staff, they're making the decisions, going through their budget and saying, well, we could cut this, we could cut that. So I really believe that, yes, I'm, so bottom line is, the amendment, yes, to collaboration, no to a target.
So where does that leave us? Do you think, Mr. Badcock?
Sorry, Chair, I did note Mayor Matheson appeared to have his hand up.
My apologies, your worship. Go ahead.
Well, notwithstanding, I won't be part of the budget process. I think that there is an opportunity for us to try something different, which is for the members of council that are part-time and not into the operations, it's tough to understand what is required to meet our legal and legislative requirements for service delivery. And of course, what we have to do to meet the minimum standards in so many of the aspects. So allowing the staff to start with preparing a budget based on those criteria. Then looking at what the asset management plan has in place for us and what is required for us to maintain. Then looking at what the asset management plan has in place for us and what is required for us to maintain. Our assets based on the provincial legislation and bring that to us as a starting point. Uh, is actually the start of collaboration. Council then looks at it and has to decide what service enhancements they want to add on top of that or where they would like to cut it. I think it's important to note that if we just give an arbitrary target. And I've been part of twenty seven budgets, so I know this to be true. It's often a bantering of what we think the number. Uh, could look like based on what we have either pre-approved or thinks on the horizon. Uh, I think because it's becoming far more complicated. Um, we can still have those discussions, but after we get that first budget in, then. The council of the day can look at it and start to look at where they would look towards getting to. And if a target becomes the number, then it becomes a math exercise. And if it's around meeting our legislative requirements and the service provisions, it is going to be collaborative. So I would just say that this is not all bad to try it this way, knowing that the council of the day ultimately has to pass a bylaw. And settle on what they would like to do as a service delivery model and the number of services they provide into what standard. And of course, meeting all our legal requirements. And we all know that is becoming increasingly. Uh, more cumbersome each and every year, and it's only gonna continue to do so.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, Counselor Rixma.
So, so through the chair, I, I'm, I'm looking to. The deputy clerk. So if the friendly amendment has not been accepted by the mover and the second or. Could we go back to the original motion uh that was moved by the staff recommendation?
Through the chair. Uh, so that is correct. Uh, there, the motion on the floor. Uh, as moved and seconded is currently the staff recommendation.
Uh, I will give Counselor Seven an opportunity to uh amend his uh. His uh, uh, motion if he wishes.
Uh, no, thank you. I just wanted to note my opposition to the motion that, uh, as it stands, just because I let him. Just rely on, thank you.
Then our, our mover and second or. Are not in uh favor of the addendum?
And I'm not, no. That you're talking about the coun- Counselor Seven's amendment? Yeah, no, I'm not in favor of it.
Mr. Bad Talk.
Uh, so at this time, uh, if there is an amending motion uh that could be brought forward. Um, I would note that uh the second piece of the staff recommendation. Um, does ask that council provides staff with any specific known initiatives to be considered. Um, and, uh, or any other amending motion uh could be brought forward at this time.
Right. Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos.
Yeah, I was just going to say that um the mover and the second or don't, don't want it to be a friendly amendment. So that means the Counselor Seven can actually make a motion for the amendment and then test the room and see if anybody is willing to add it.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos. Counselor Burbach.
I just, I saw that the director might have something to say, so I just wanted to point that out.
Carmen.
Thank you for the chair. Just, I just wanted to sort of clarify, and I don't know if this is gonna be labor things or, or help the process at all, but. The, the, the internal sort of workings of the budget and the direction provided from the senior management team to. Uh, to all of staff is really that of like what they refer to as zero-based budgeting. So it's really not to add. Any more than is absolutely necessary to keep those service levels the same. So it's, you know, even, even. Pro- proposing some sort of a target, like, you know, that's almost implying that. That even a, some flat percentage rate increase is acceptable, even if we don't require it. So it, so I think there's some, some conversation around that piece that, you know. And that, that, that conversation happens sort of a little bit later, because I, and again, I'm new to the city, so my first uh. Opportunity to, to present to this council with a budget was last fall and, you know, I, I came in with the, the understanding that there was a. A target provided to staff of two to three percent and I was working with nine or ten percent to start with. So. That was a huge gap and I was trying to, I guess, mitigate some of that with this report to, to ensure that there wasn't that. Um, uh, uh, such a, such a difference in terms of what's expected versus what's coming. So. I don't know if that helped at all, but just wanted to state that.
Thank you. So uh, uh, Mr. Bad Talk, uh, what would you like from us next?
Uh, so through the chair, as previously mentioned, uh, there uh is the option to bring forward an amending motion at this time. Uh, should any uh member wish to do so.
Counselor Seven.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that was my initial intent was to put forward a, a motion for an amendment for. Collaboration with staff and to, for council to set uh target for the budget. So I'll put it on the floor. I don't. Probably not worthwhile, but I'll put it out there and, and uh over that.
Do we have a second or? Counselor Clifford. Any. Uh, discussion. I'll call the question, the amend, the amendment. I'll call all those in favor. Opposed? That is defeated. Uh, so back to the original motion. Any other questions or discussion? See, none. I'll, I'll call the question. Uh, Counselor, uh, Mr. Bad Talk.
Uh, through the chair, uh, just given the wording of the recommendation, uh, if there aren't any. Uh, additional amendments to be brought forward with respect to specific known initiatives. Um, perhaps the wording uh could be adjusted that, and there, that uh, no specific known initiatives. Uh, to be considered changes or additions uh to capital projects identified in the ten-year capital forecast, changes in service levels or activities. To advance the approved priorities goals uh to be considered at this time.
Uh, Counselor Rixma. Counselor Rixma.
As the mover, I accept that.
Yes, that's a.
Thank you. Uh, but that's what the understanding, Mr. Ben Talk, that uh. Uh, that uh. That there may be some suggestions moving forward also, I guess. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, want to pose that? Item five point two. Long-term debt and borrowing draft policy, lease financing draft policy. An update of bank signing authorities. Moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by. Counselor Beatty. Uh, any uh comments or questions for staff? See none? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Most funny, and that's carried. Uh, item six, adjournment. Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Vassalakos. All those in favor? That's carried. Thanks, everybody. Sorry about the technical problems on my end.
No problem. Thank you, Counselor Gaffney. Well, now to go to Planning and Heritage and I'll turn it over to Counselor Ritzman's chair to chair this section.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order. Are there any disclosures of community or interests or the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Uh, delegations, uh, three point one, there is a delegation request and there's a motion that the delegation of. Uh, Tobin uh Schlegel and President of Sugarfield. Commercial Inc. and Cameron Moffat of MTE. With respect to the variance for the ground sign to be erected on one six six two. Nine, one nine four Ontario Street, he heard a motion. Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Move and second by Counselor Burbach. All in favor? Thank you very much, and that's carried. And. I'll ask that Deputy Kirk bring our two presenters in.
Uh, hello, thank you. Uh, it's Cameron with M T. I appreciate you all taking the time to. Listen or read this uh motion. Um, the only thing I've noted in the council's report. Um, would just be that the, there's a slight change from, from what's listed there. In the replacement of this sign and that it's uh five point three meters east instead of three meters west. Uh, that would be the only amendment to, to the report that's provided. But I can, so it's a relocation of the sign. Uh, we are undertaking a encroachment application that's underway. And will be submitted um to, to planning shortly. Um, as that's provided, and I, again, identified as one of the, the requirements in the report.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Mr. Schlegel, anything to add at this time?
Nothing specific.
Thank you so much. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Moving on to item four, and that's the report of the municipal law enforcement officer. And I'll invite Mr. DeWeer to give an overview of item four point one.
Uh, thank, thank you. And through the chair, I can give a brief update on uh this, uh, this sign as, uh, as noted by the applicant. There is a change now to move the sign towards the east on the property from the original location, and that was, uh, as noted in the report. Due to uh some underground infrastructure that wasn't known at, at the time of the last. Uh, variance request from this applicant. So based on council approving the, the past request. Uh, staff in this case do actually um recommend uh. Uh, supporting, supporting the location of this new sign. I am available for any questions at council we have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. DeWeer? Seeing none, there is a. There is a staff recommendation. Counselor Ingram will move and Counselor Clifford will second. Discussion?
Just noting that I am moving as amended so that it, the staff recommendation no longer says three meters west and is amended to five point three meters east.
East, that's correct. Thank you very much, Counselor Ingram. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving down to item five, report of chief administrative officer. I'll turn it over to Ms. Thompson with regards to five point one proposed site. Altercation bylaw. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. Um, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so we are here before you this evening to present a draft site alteration bylaw for council's consideration. Uh, the purpose of a site alteration bylaw uh is to control site alteration activities in Stratford. Uh, because these activities relate to the alteration of the grade of the land, placing or dumping of fill. And the removal of topsoil to allow pre-development activities and to ensure compliance. With the Ministry of the Environment Conservation and Parks guidelines with respect to uh alteration of uh, of sites. Um, as noted in the report, the, the ministry uh has enacted guidelines for the management of excess soil to promote sustainability. And to protect the natural environment. Um, those guidelines were recently updated. Um, and municipalities are encouraged to promote a sustainable excess soil management by adopting uh site alteration. Um, bylaws. Um, the site alteration bylaw, a draft of it, uh, that outlines a permit process are recommended. Uh, to you to ensure appropriate controls are in place. When there is a large-scale uh movement of soil or hauling of soil on a site, the owner would be required to. Enter into a site alteration agreement rather than a permit. So in the report, it does talk about when a permit would be required uh for, what would I call smaller projects. Versus when an agreement would be required. In the report, it talks about uh the, the conditions for the permit. It also talks about um site alteration agreements and what will be normally in those agreements. Um, in the report, it also talks about the exemptions. So all lands in the city of Stratford would be subject to the proposed site alteration bylaw. Except for those items listed in the, uh, in the report. And to give a few examples, uh, they would be. Developments that are already subject to a, a building permit or a development agreement. Swimming pools or additions to an existing building where a building permit has already been issued. Small landscaping or gardening projects in residential properties. Um, so that is the, the, the report. The financial impacts are listed there and there is a staff recommendation. Um, that the site alteration bylaw as presented be adopted. And that there be fees and charges by law amendment. And that city construction inspectors be appointed as enforcement officers in addition to other, um, excuse me. In addition to the other enforcement officers that would be able to enforce the site alteration bylaw. And I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I, I would like to ask, uh, it, it talks about, it does not, it does not include projects of the city of Stratford. And I'm just curious how come it isn't including projects that are undertaken by Strat.
Ms. Thompson.
Uh, thank you. So normally, um, city projects um of this nature. Um, would be exempt from the requirements because we would be issuing a permit to ourselves. We would still need to be required to follow the guidelines and adhere to them. Um, so that is why it is typical with salt site alteration bylaws to exempt. Um, means that the city of Stratford, plus, um, if we were doing road projects. Um, including the MTO or the county, if they were doing ro- road projects within the, the city on boundary roads. But they would be exempt from the site alteration bylaw. They're still governed by the guidelines, but it is typical to exempt municipalities. From, from those provisions.
Thank you. Anything further? Uh, Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. And a second or for that. Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos. Further discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item is adjournment of a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Bunting, and seconded by Counselor Beatty. All in favor? And that's carried, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ritzma. Counsel will reconvene. I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Through your worship, uh, item fifteen one is declarations of community interest made at standing committee, and if there were any, uh, please restate their so.
Counselor Vassalakos.
Uh, item four point one in finance labor relations. I'm on the capital campaign committee for optimism place.
Thank you, Counselor Burbach.
Item nine point two point one in the report of planning and heritage committee, uh, proposed exemption of signed bylaw. I am on a board that is a tenant in that, on that property.
Thank you. All right. Back to you, Mr. Bad Talk.
Item fifteen point two is committee reports and item fifteen point two point one is the social services committee. Uh, there are two reports listed, that being identified need within the homelessness portfolio for enhanced staffing. Uh, and homemakers and nurses service contract renewal for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. And there is a motion that the items five point two and seven point one of the social services committee meeting dated August eighth, twenty twenty two. Uh, be adopted as noted on your agenda.
Counselor Bunting, his vice chair, you move that? Thank you. And a second or is Counselor Burbach, discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. That's carried.
Item fifteen point two point two is the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee. And there are, uh, two reports listed, uh, seven point one being the Blue Box Services with Circular Materials Ontario for the transition period of May first, twenty twenty, uh, four to December thirty first, twenty twenty five, uh, as well as item nine point one, the overnight parking strategy. Uh, and there is a motion that item seven point one and nine point one of the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee meeting dated August eighth, twenty twenty two be adopted as noted on your agenda.
Counselor Murbach as vice chair, you'll move that, and seconded by Counselor Vassalakos as chair. Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, Beatty, that's carried.
Item fifteen point two point three is the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there's one report listed. That's five point two, long-term debt and borrowing draft policy, lease financing draft policy, and update of banking signing authorities. And there is a motion that item five point two of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee meeting dated August eighth, twenty twenty two be adopted as on your agenda.
Counselor Gaffey, I'll move as chair. Counselor Clifford is vice chair, I'll second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, Beatty, that's carried.
And item fifteen point two point four of the Planning and Heritage Committee, uh, there is one report listed, that being five point one proposed site alteration bylaw. And there is a motion that item five point one of the Planning and Heritage Committee meeting dated August eighth, twenty twenty two be adopted as noted on your agenda.
Counselor Ritzman as chair, moving. Counselor Ingram? Seconding as vice chair, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, Beatty, and that is carried. Thank you.
Item fifteen point three is reading of the bylaws for reconvene, and there are six bylaws listed. Uh, fifteen point three point one to amend traffic and parking bylaw. Fifteen point three point two, site alteration bylaw. Fifteen point three point three to amend fees and charges bylaw to establish fees under the site alteration bylaw. Fifteen point three point four to appoint enforcement officers for the purpose of enforcing the salt all site alteration bylaw. Uh, fifteen point three point five to amend delegation of authority bylaw, and fifteen point three point six confirmatory bylaw. Uh, these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present, and I would note, uh, just for, uh, the agenda, uh, the motions, uh, for the bylaw should read, uh, fifteen point three point one to fifteen point three point six.
Thank you. And a mover for those to be taken collectively? Counselor Bunting, second. Counselor Murbach. All those in favor? Opposed, Beatty? That is unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading. Moved by Counselor Clifford and seconded by Counselor Beatty, that bylaws fifteen three one through fifteen three six be read at first and second time. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. And of course, third and final reading is moved by Counselor Gaffey and second by Counselor Ingram for bylaws fifteen three one through fifteen three six. All those in favor? Opposed, and that carries. A motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Counselor Ritzman, Counselor Seven, seconding. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, everyone.